First order of business is to appoint an alternate because I don't see Donna anywhere. So Diane, can you sit for Donna, please?
Sure.
And first order of business is the consideration of the minutes that were sent out. Anybody have any comments or corrections?
Dave, I read the minutes and I think they're satisfactory the way they were submitted. So I move that we accept them as they were submitted.
Okay.
I second it.
Okay, who seconded?
Anne.
Anne, you moved around on my screen. You're way up in the right now. You don't know that, but anyway. Okay, thank you very much. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Okay, minutes are approved as submitted. Okay, the next order of business is a public hearing. Mr. Vice Chairman, do you want to read the call?
Um, I'm not in position to do that.
Okay.
My agenda is blocked right now. I've got to change computers.
Well, let me, I got myself in full screen mode and I can't get the, uh, I can't.
I can do it for you, Dave.
Can you do it?
Yeah, sure.
Go right ahead.
This is, uh, the first order, the public hearing is on application 21-19 of 34 Hop Meadow Street Realty Company LLC. Owner David Zikaias, professional engineer applicant. Application for special exception pursuant to section 5.5 of zoning regulations, special exception is for the expansion of the existing medical marijuana production facility per plans provided at the property located at 34 Hop Meadow Street.
Thank you.
Sure.
Do we have someone speaking for the applicant to tell us, Dave?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name's Dave Ziax. I'm with FA Hesketh Associates. We're located over in East Granby. And with me this evening is Rich Kaiser from CHK Architects. I know you're all familiar with them. They're located in Simsbury. And also joining us this evening from Kira Leaf is Kristen Tangaro, who will answer any questions that you might have for the applicant and operations or whatever you'd like to ask her. Uh, but basically what I'd like to do, Ms. Chairman, is share the screen.
Okay.
And basically these are colored renderings of the site plan package that's before you this evening. You've got advanced copies of. But it's, uh, we're back at, um, down on, uh, Hot Meadow Street where the, uh, planned area development was proposed by Mr. Greenberg. And, uh, that included, um, that included the Aspen Garden Apartments that were constructed over the last few years. Uh, it includes the self-service, uh, used store service buildings that were, uh, approved by the commission earlier this year, if you'll recall. And then it's the Kira Leaf facility is located sort of in the central portion of the site. Uh, it's a 26 acre parcel. Uh, off to the left here, off to the, uh, on my, uh, screen here are two undeveloped parcels that are still available for development along Route 10. Those are all part of the master plan as well. And then there's some additional land, um, to the west of the used store facility that is available for additional development as well. But tonight we're focusing on the centerpiece that's currently leased by Kira Leaf back a couple of years ago. Uh, this commission approved the special exception use for marijuana growing facility at this for medical purposes, uh, at this facility. And I think we're all familiar with this. This was the former CLMP customer service center that existed here for many years. It was converted by Kira Leaf successfully for their operations. Uh, to gain access to the site, uh, there's a common driveway sort of in the center of the site that is shared with the apartments as well. They have a, a formal entrance further to the south down near Avon. Uh, that is the main entrance to the apartments, but this is a secondary driveway that's shared with Kira Leaf. Uh, there's employees parking on the south side of the building and there's the main facility and then there's employee parking, loading operations and like located on the east side of the building. The very easterly portion of the site, which is a large expanse of asphalt and a couple of old buildings, those were part of the operations for CLMP. And Kira Leaf really doesn't use that area of the site right now. Uh, there's some additional environmental cleanup still taking place on that site related to the old legacy, uh, CLMP activities there. So that's, uh, that's just going to remain as is for now until the cleanup is, uh, completed and some other uses proposed there. Um, what we're looking at this evening is an expansion to the, uh, growing facilities for Kira Leaf. That would be this, uh, sort of orange colored building that I have indicated here. It'd be a little over 61,000 square foot addition to their existing facility. Uh, access to the expansion will be all internal. Uh, the only, uh, doorways on the outside of the, of the expansion are for fire egress, emergency egress, uh, you know, to the outside. But all employee activities and everything loading operations will take place, um, connected to the existing Kira Leaf facility. Uh, there's presently 249 parking spaces on the site. We're going to be, uh, increasing that just by a couple to 252, really through restriping. Our plan is to restripe the entire back area and formalize that again back to its parking. They haven't parked back there in a while, but Kira Leaf will be parking back there. Uh, we'll be installing some new, uh, ADA handicap parking spaces back here because the employees will be entering into this, uh, corner, sort of southeast corner of the, uh, proposed expansion area. Currently, uh, the loading that takes place for the facility, which is pretty minimal actually, takes place in this building located right here and that will continue. So all of the loading activities emitting are not visible from, uh, from Route 10 on the facility. Um, there will be some minor site changes in addition for utilities and drainage, but nothing that'll be really noticeable to the public. Um, we did submit, um, to you, actually, we could take a little closer look at the layout here. I did a colored rendering of the layout. And again, this is the existing Kira Leaf facility here. This is the paved parking area along the east side. And this is the expansion right here. It's, uh, for a little over 41,000 square feet is the expansion. So that'll bring, um, the facility, uh, the current facility is a little over 60,000 square feet. So we'll be up over 100,000 square feet total with the facility. As part of our application, um, we did submit a traffic statement. We really don't see a large increase in traffic here at all. The, the access to the site will continue to be that driveway, that shared driveway seems to be operating um, sufficiently these days. Um, we did provide that traffic letter to give you some, some, uh, you know, indications of the increase in traffic, but really it's, it's only a few trips in the morning and a few trips in the afternoon, which translates to about one new trip every two minutes. We're projecting in and out of the site. So it's pretty minor increase in traffic. Um, we, uh, we did go, we did provide, uh, information to staff on the, um, the six criteria that you folks need to consider, you know, whenever you either approve or modify a special exception, which this is for the use. And there were the six, um, criteria that, um, Michael provided to you in the staff, um, letter and, uh, suggested the motions and, you know, background information for the application. And, uh, one was the orderly development and the other one's property values. Third one's public safety. Fourth one's traffic considerations. Fifth one's landscaping and buffers and the sixth one's relationship to utility streams, drainage systems and like. And, uh, as indicated in the narrative in this attachment A, it's in your package. Uh, the, uh, as far as orderly development goes, the subject property is located in the PAD and the underlying zone, uh, before the PAD was, uh, all industrial. This property is all zoned industrial. So the use is consistent with the orderly development, property values. Uh, actually the, uh, the, the expansion will result in increase in taxes, positive impacts on the, uh, community. And we really don't see any impact to the, uh, surrounding, uh, existing development, given how far back set off of Route 10 this facility is. And there really are no abutting residential developments, uh, to, uh, you know, the, uh, the, uh, the expansion area. Uh, public safety, uh, the operation is in, uh, current facility does not pose any danger to the public. And with the expansion, we don't see any. We did get some comments from your fire marshal who would like a little bit more access, uh, area around the building. Uh, we will provide that. That's, uh, as a condition of the approval, suggested condition of approval. But other than that, no other major issues. We talked about the traffic considerations. We really don't see this as, uh, increasing traffic, um, you know, uh, use of the site. Uh, landscaping and buffering, if we take a look at, um, that aerial photo, you can see, uh, along the northerly side of the addition, there is a nice tree row all along this, uh, parcel line. And then there's a large groupings of very mature trees along Route 10. And then there's scattered very nice, uh, mature deciduous trees out in the open area, uh, where the large lawn area is along Route 10. Uh, just previous to this meeting, we had a meeting with the design review board. They suggested that we fill in these gaps. Maybe with some, a nice mix of additional evergreens and we agreed to do that. That was a, a recommendation from them. But other than that, there's really no additional landscaping or buffering requiring, required as it relates to the abutting properties. And then as far as utility systems, drainage and things, uh, we have, uh, public water, public sewer. Uh, drainage is contained on our site. So there's really no, um, impacts to public infrastructure or to the drainage systems. Um, what I think I'd like to do at this point is to turn it over, uh, to, uh, Rich from CHK, who will talk about the architecture. And, uh, this will be the same information that we provided to the, uh, design review board a little while ago. Rich?
Hello, uh, my name is Rich Kaiser. I'm a partner with Alessi Harris and Kaiser Architects. Uh, what you see in front of you is a, uh, a building plan with the existing building in the lower and lower right parts of this, uh, building plan. And then the building addition is at the top of the plan. And, uh, you can see, uh, from this building plan that this is really a production facility, uh, with respect to the fact that these are, are grow rooms. This isn't, uh, and then, and then there's some, uh, ancillary space that supports those, those rooms and, uh, some renovations within the existing building, uh, that will provide some, uh, employee, uh, facilities, uh, such as locker rooms and toilet rooms. Uh, but the bulk of this building addition is really all about, uh, uh, additional grow rooms. Dave, you can go to the next plan. Uh, this is a blown up plan of the 41,600, uh, 680 square foot building addition. And again, you could see it provides, uh, eight new grow rooms and then, uh, some space that supports those, those grow rooms. Uh, so again, this, this isn't a building that's, has anything to do with access to the public. It's really, uh, totally an internal, uh, production space for Kira Leaf. Okay, Dave, you can go to the next drawing. Uh, these drawings depict the four elevations of our rectangular building, uh, in order to accommodate the needs of these grow rooms. Uh, this, uh, building addition will be approximately 32 feet from grade. Uh, the building is situated on a part of the site where in order to maintain, uh, the first floor continuous, uh, level, uh, there's parts of this building addition that are approximately four feet from natural grade. Uh, so we're bringing the, uh, the metal siding treatment, uh, down to, uh, within a foot of grade. Uh, so it'll, it'll, it won't feel as though when you look at this building, it's sitting up on a platform. But in order to accommodate the, uh, the needs of the grow rooms and then the mechanical needs, uh, the building's about, uh, 32 feet tall. And then there's a 10-foot screen above that, uh, to screen the, uh, the mechanical systems. And you can see from the building elevations that, uh, this is a building that isn't really meant to call attention to itself. Uh, the, the doorways you see are really all exits except for that one, uh, door, which will be an employee access, uh, underneath an existing canopy. Okay, Dave, you can go to the rendering. So the materials that you'll see on the building, uh, are a beige metal panel. And that metal panel is in a similar color to the existing brick masonry on the building. And the height of that, that's part of our metal panel system is similar to the height of the existing building. Uh, at the lower level, the ribs are larger and, uh, further apart to give it a more rusticated look. Above that is a dark band and that band will give you the sense that there's a shadow there. Uh, that band is a, uh, more of a smooth metal panel. And then above that, there's a green colored metal panel, uh, with a finer texture. Again, there's still ribs, but they're smaller ribs and they're closer together. Uh, so it'll give you a, uh, like I said, more of a fine texture. And, uh, and then the roof screen is set 10 feet, uh, from the roof edge and that'll be a, uh, a light metallic color. Uh, and our, uh, our feeling is that that'll, you know, that'll reflect some daylight and some sky and, and that'll tend to, uh, it's to somewhat disappear. Uh, this might be hard for you to see, but these are the colors that are being proposed. Uh, so you have the, the beige, uh, metal panel on the bottom. You have this dark band, which is more of a smooth, uh, metal panel. And then the, uh, the four finer textured metal panel will be in this green color. And then the roof screen is going to be this, uh, silvery, uh, panel that'll tend to blend more naturally with the sky. So those are the colors and those are the materials and those are the textures of the building addition. Uh, all in all, I think, like I said, this building is meant to be more background than foreground. It isn't, uh, uh, a place for the public. So it is really, uh, meant to, uh, to not draw a lot of attention to itself. Uh, and I think where it's situated on the site and where it's located on the site relative to existing vegetation, uh, I don't think it'll, uh, like I said, I don't think it'll really be something that, uh, is going to be highly noticed by anyone traveling up and down, uh, Hot Meadow Street. Thank you. If you have any questions, we can answer your questions.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, um, again, I think, um, we've proven that, uh, you know, we're in compliance with the master plan PAD. It's consistent with the, uh, previous approvals. Um, we have, uh, also I think we're in compliance, especially as you relate to the six findings, suspicious, uh, findings that you need to review for special exception criteria. Uh, we don't see where there'll be any impact to, uh, either, uh, any of our, uh, abutting neighbors or the general population and, uh, no impact to Route 10 as it relates to traffic. Uh, we have a, uh, we met with the design review board and they gave you a favorable recommendation for the project, which is, uh, a suggestion to add some additional evergreens, uh, to, um, you know, fill in, um, a couple of the gaps along the, uh, the front area here, which would be, you know, in between the large deciduous trees. And, um, and at this point, I think we, uh, we, oh, there was some staff, you have a full staff report from, uh, Michael Glidden and, uh, there were, uh, a few, um, comments and recommendations for conditions of approval to address a few outstanding staff comments. Uh, you know, we have no, uh, problem with any of those recommendations from the, uh, from the director of planning. So at this point, I'd be happy to answer any additional questions you might have.
Okay. Does anyone on the commission have questions about this, um, application or the staff report? There were some comments, um, from Jeff Shea, the town engineer about, um, I guess it's drainage and, uh, clearing out, um, an existing pipe or something. Uh, and removing a, uh, removing a, uh, what do you call it? One of the, uh, drains, whatever you call those.
Mr. Chairman, it was a catch basin.
Catch basin, thank you.
Yeah.
Yes. I get old, I can't remember anything. Um, catch basin. And, uh, anyway, so I just, do you have any comments about the town engineer's, uh, report, which I, I believe we're incorporating his comments and anything that we might pass, but, uh,
Yeah.
What are your comments on it?
Uh, no, those were, uh, those were general comments. I reviewed them, um, and, uh, have already started to, uh, you know, develop responses and, uh, minor revisions to the plan. So we have no problem uh, addressing the town engineer's comments and, uh, we see that it's been rolled in as conditions of the approval and we, you know, we have no difficulty with that. We accept those. They're all, it's all minor engineer to engineer stuff.
Hey, we're engineers, you know?
Well, then you understand.
Thank you. Any other, um, questions from the commission, please?
Well, okay, I have a few, but I, I can certainly wait.
Oh. Go ahead, Bruce.
Well, first of all, I'm not an engineer and I felt was a little confused by the engineering sort of issues here. But I wonder if, uh, it could be described, if the, the, the water uh, draining from those in parking lots that abut the apartment complex. Those parking lots on this parcel used to drain over to the town of Avon. There was a pipe underneath basically the parcel where the, uh, apartments are. And the water drained into Avon. I wondered if that's still the case? And if not, where is that water going off those parking lots?
Um, yes, um, all, all of the, all of the paved areas on the Kira Leaf site uh, drain to that same pipe. It's located, it's hiding right in here. It's located here and it, and it's, it's been piped through the apartment complex. And then it drains to, um, if you recall over, it doesn't show on my photo, but, uh, it drains to a wooded, actually you can see it up here in the area map. There's a wooded wetland area, water course area located right at the, at the property line at Avon. That's an open water course there. So all of the drainage goes into that open water course and then it continues on through the drainage systems in Avon. So there's, there's no change to that current pattern. There's no increase in the coverage. Yeah.
Um, I wondered also if, uh, just to refresh my memory that, you know, you continue to refer to the PAD that was approved years ago on this property, some years ago. I'm, I'm trying to remember, is what we see there, other than the addition that you're proposing now, the rest of it is, was in place at the time the PAD was approved. This, this property really is unchanged since before the PAD was introduced.
Uh, no, because the, the apartments, the apartments.
No, 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 it was, yeah. I, yeah, I'm, I'm trying to make the distinction here. I recognize there's three subsets that we keep talking about, but I think there, there's a, uh, you know, there's actually a division of ownership of some legal sort between these three parcels. But I'm talking about the center parcel. Call it what you will, where Kira Leaf is now.
Yes.
Is there anything different there than the structure and layout of that property then at the time the PAD was approved? Now, the other two parcels were vacant land. This center chunk had a building and I'm just trying to understand, has there been any other change? Or is this the first change to that? So the PADs had no effect here. This is basically industrial use. And it's continuing in industrial use and it happens to be within a PAD that was approved a few years ago.
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay. Then, um, just a couple of other things. There was, I think you were, somebody referenced, uh, what sounded like continuing environmental cleanup on this site. And I'm, I'm wondering if I heard that correctly. Is there continuing environmental cleanup? For, you know, in place today on the site?
Yes, there's, uh, there are issues that are, uh, related to the old legacy of, uh, CLMP's, you know, operations yard out here. Nothing of any real major concern, but just your general industrial kind of, you know, cleanup that's under, under, under review and in process over time. But again, nothing of any real consequence.
Hmm, I'm not sure, I, I can relate to that notion of, of not, not real consequence when it's environmental cleanup. But I'm, I'm just want to be sure, whatever's going on there has been in place for some time. There's been no change in whatever the, it, I, I mean, maybe you could offer an observation as to whether there's progress in the cleanup. Or is this going to be going on indefinitely or?
Maybe we could, we could ask, uh, Kristen. Kristen can answer that question better.
Hi, hi, everybody. Thanks for having us tonight. Yes, there has been, um, we've been in the building for just about two years at this point and it has been ongoing since then. Um, it is EverSource leading the charge or CLMP leading the charge on the remediation. So, um, there doesn't seem to be any sense of urgency in terms of how quickly they're going to, um, to finish it up. However, um, they are on the property several times a year. Um, in fact, I just got notification that they'll be there, um, later this week to do some groundwater, um, monitoring. So it is ongoing and, uh, there is no end date that I can provide for you, but they are continuing to work through it.
Well, I don't want to hold the show up, but I think it would be helpful if the next time, uh, the ownership uh, presents, uh, you know, another application to the zoning commission. I, I think it would be beneficial for the town residents who watch these programs as well as our members to have a better understanding of what's been going on there for decades, decades in terms of environmental cleanup that we, we know almost nothing about. And, okay, so that's, that's enough on that topic. Now.
Yeah, actually I would like to follow up because Bruce, last time we looked at the application for the, the, um, storage units, I thought we were told that there wasn't any active cleanup.
Well.
And it's all the same parcel.
Well, is it? Because, um, you know, I, I don't know that, uh, you know, my, when I inquired of Mr. Greenberg or, or Mr. Greenberg provided a response at the hearing relative to the, uh, storage units, uh, I pointed out the location of the monitoring wells that are between the, uh, building, the proposed complex over there and the railroad, uh, former railroad, uh, bed. Uh, those monitoring wells are still there. As I reflect, Kevin, I can't remember if he said they're still active or not. I think he said, he said they're still active, but, um, uh, there, it wasn't clear at all what, what exactly the history was and what the, the prognosis is. But we, we kind of, uh, moved on and we're about to do the same thing here. We, we don't really have a prognosis. We don't have a good understanding of why there's environmental cleanup, what they're cleaning up and in what decade we could expect as the residents of this town, this project to be wound down. And I know there were monitoring wells over where the apartments are now because there was a proposal emerging years ago, uh, that had a notion of a big box store going at the far end and in the east, well, the southeast corner of that, where they were monitoring wells. They're not there anymore. There are apartments now. So I'm not sure what happened to the monitoring and the environmental cleanup over there. I'm, I'm not suggesting anything untoward happened, but you know, I, I think it would be helpful. But we never have anybody, when we come, when we're looking at proposals for this property, we never have anybody who can say, I know what's going on. I know the history. I know what's going to happen in the future. It's always, don't worry about it. It's, it's not very, it's not very much. It's not very important. Somebody somewhere is working on it.
Bruce, Bruce, this is, this is really, um, way off the subject and Deep is probably the, um, agency that we should inquire.
Okay.
So maybe we could ask staff to talk to Deep and see what's happening.
Okay. And, and I have a couple of other questions. One, I'm, I just want to be sure I understood this. The colors that were displayed as the, uh, building colors, I just wanted to be sure those are the ones that the, uh, DRB endorsed tonight, right? They endorse colors and now those are the colors that would be part of the build out. Okay.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm, I'm, that's, that's it for my questions for now.
Okay. Any, any other people in the, members of the Okay. Any, any other people in the members of the commission? Kevin and Mike?
I have a quick one. Um, uh, as also a non-engineer, I have a English major type question. Um, I'm just curious with the additional square footage, it looks like you will be anticipating doing additional hiring and I'm just curious how many additional positions are you anticipating?
At this time, at this time, we're, um, it's somewhere around 40 people.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Sounds good. Okay. And any other commission questions? Um, is there anyone here who would like to speak from the general public? I see we have a number of, uh, other people listening in. I don't hear anybody. Laura, do we have any comments that we've received from the public?
I have not received any public comment on this application.
Okay, is anyone, any of you are on the phone, have a, or on the, uh, yeah, I guess you're all on phones. We'll give you a chance to ask questions. Don't see anybody trying to, uh, trying to contact us. Um, okay, are we ready to close this public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, that concludes our presentation.
Thank you. If there are no more questions, do we have a motion to close the public hearing? Mike Doyle? You have a second?
Second.
Second by Ann Erickson? Any discussion on this? Okay, let's vote to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, any abstaining? Okay, the public hearing is closed. Thank you very much. Okay, the next order of business. I look at my agenda to make sure.
Is this application?
Is to consider this application 21-19. Okay. The staff has given us a report. They, they have said that the, uh, basically the application is, is, um, in, in conformance with everything and they have covered the six items that we need to consider in a special exception. He has listed some considerations that should be part of any motion to, um, cover the drainage and so forth. Mike, you have any other comments on this?
Uh, excuse me, just to add one, I'm sorry. Um, that, uh, a condition number four for the final plan shall incorporate uh, the following, uh, condition number four, additional evergreen plantings along the additions western elevation facing Hot Meadow Street are to be added in order to fill landscaping gaps between existing vegetation per recommendation of the design review board. So that would incorporate their findings in, in, um, having that added to the final plan. Otherwise, as you pointed out earlier, a lot of, uh, the Jeff had five comments that are outstanding. However, the, these have been incorporated into the approval to be addressed, which the, which the applicant has agreed to. And should not have a substantive, uh, impact to the, uh, the approval. Um, in order to save time, if someone wanted, if you agreed with the findings and the motions, I mean, the conditions here, you could just make a motion to approve the application subject to the conditions and findings, attachment A, the staff report dated September 19th, 2021. That way you don't have to read the whole thing if you would like to save some time.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay. Uh, anybody else have any comments or questions or? When somebody want to make motion to approve this application?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve application 21-19 of 34 Hot Meadow Street Realty Company LLC owner. David Zeig, uh, Zakis, sorry, David, uh, PE applicant, application, application for special exception present to section 5.5 of the zoning regulations. Special exception is for the expansion of the existing medical marijuana production facility per plans provided at the property located at 34 Hot Meadow Street. Assessors map E19 block 117, lot 001C. The zone is a PAD. Um, and I would also like to include the comments and, um, staff draft, uh, from Mr. Glidden and his team dated September 19th, 2021.
Attachment A.
And also including attachment.
Right. As modified and number four and attachment A is modified to include the, uh, evergreens.
The, yeah, they additional plantings identified at designer review.
Okay, does our clerk have that? Okay.
Please make me sound smarter.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Who seconded it? Diane?
Yep.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Just a, a comment for the record, Dave, that, uh, for those who have been on the commission a few years would recall that I was the, uh, no vote, uh, when the use of, of application originally came to us two years plus ago. Uh, tonight's meeting hasn't persuaded me that I, I made an error in my assessment. And I intend not to support this, but I'm in, in support of the business, the enterprise. I'm just not comfortable with the location.
Okay.
End of sermon.
Any, any other comments? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
One, two, three, four, opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Anybody abstaining? Okay, so it's five, one. The motion carries. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. Good night.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I believe if I look at my agenda, the next thing is, uh, the, um, general commission business, the zoning reorganization bill that was recently passed and recreational cannabis. And I think the staff has agreed to tell us what we have to do, what we have to consider in these two areas. So, um, I guess the first thing is the, um, the zoning reorganization bill and I think the main thing that we are looking at is whether or not this commission would like to vote to exempt ourselves from the provision for, um, um, in-law apartments as of right. Accessory apartments as of right. If, um, I believe the way it works is we, if we vote to exempt ourselves and the selectmen also vote to exempt us, then we are exempt from uh, that provision and our existing regulations would hold. Is that correct, uh, Mike or Laura?
That, that, that is correct, Dave. Um, the only catch is we'd have to have a public hearing to vote to opt out.
Okay, so we'd have to vote here first.
Yeah. And then so we, we would have one in the, in the board of selectmen. Both boards have to vote to opt out. The way the, the, the law reads is the zoning commission would say no, and then the legislative body says no, and the community then is exempted. And if you were to go down that road, um, I would recommend that we do that also for the parking, uh, standards that are associated with the housing, uh, changes that were made in this public act. Because that there's both of them, we have to opt out.
Okay, I was going to ask if there was another one. I thought there was another, another section that we could do that. Um, and does anyone have any questions about this, um?
It seems like it's, it warrants a bit of a deeper dive on what, what are the provisions that are objectionable? Why wouldn't we accept the wisdom of our legislators and, uh, you know, recognizing that there are changes to the way we do our, the way our ADU regulation is set up today, but.
Well, I think the first, the first thing is the ADU regulations that we have today require a public hearing in a special exception. And we have seen, uh, in a couple of cases where we got people out and involved over the last, uh, six or eight years or 10 years. And I think that there's some feeling, at least on my part, that that uh, public hearing provision is something that people in the community like. And the statute, the way it has been written is to enable, uh, ADOs anywhere as of right where there's a single families, family zoning um, district. And for me, that's, uh, that's something that I think we should be looking at and decide whether or not we want to opt out or not.
So what, what, what kind of a vote are you thinking of tonight, Dave? I'm not, I, I can see.
To set a public hearing if we were intending, if we intended to opt out, we'd have to set a public hearing and you know, have, invite people to come and give their opinions and, uh, then we'd have to discuss it and pass the, um, and pass a motion.
Yeah, I, I, I think we do need, uh, more input on that. Uh, I'm not ready to say that I, you know, think we should opt out because I think there is feeling in the community that we should be doing something to follow. There's, there's interest in, in the affordable housing and, and we've got, you know, several organizations within the town are exploring this. So I don't think, um, we should rush into opting out without getting a sense of the community.
Okay, is there a time limit, Mike?
So we're going to have to, uh, make a call on this in, I believe it's, it's coming up in April, um, on what we want to do for, uh, action on this particular item. Um, and then the other, the other thing is if the commission says, you know, we're not going to opt out, we're going to keep it. I would say that we'd have to amend our, our regulations then. Uh, because we, we have a conflict with a few standards along with the square footage for what will be allowed as of right now, meaning the, they, an individual who wants to a accessory dwelling unit that's a thousand square feet and conforms to the standards and the statute would simply get a permit from, uh, Laura. They would not come to the commission period. Um, that, that's basically how it will work. Laura, do you want to add anything to that?
No, you pretty much summed it up. It does, uh, there's no distinction anymore as far as detached and attached accessory dwelling units. So right now you have detached going for a special exception. That's totally got done. They'd be handled exactly the same way with an administrative zoning permit.
Okay, but we, um, we have some time on this issue. Um, so how would you like to, um, to do it? Should we set a date when we're going to discuss this? And decide on whether we're going to have a public hearing or not?
Could we, um, actually have a, a joint meeting maybe with, with planning and the selectmen even to discuss this concept? Um, you know, it, it was, what's, it's kind of weird is the timing of it as far as, you know, an election coming up, but, um, I think it, I think it merits, just for the sake of the town, I think it merits a bigger discussion as to how, you know, Simsbury wants to address this.
Well, we have a role. I, I don't think we can have the joint meeting with planning.
Um, yeah, yeah, we allow, we allow joint meetings.
I think we have to call them workshops or something. Uh, there's a euphemism that works. I don't know it for sure, but.
Well, there's a, there's a.
I've heard these things in the past decades.
Joint meetings.
Bruce is correct. We can have a workshop with them.
I would raise one other point that I, I'm not going to go into it any length, but timing is, is huge for this group that is wandering around, but maybe coming to the end of the road over short-term, uh, rental units or short-term, yeah, short-term rentals.
Yep.
And, uh, we've got size and other things in this draft regulate, draft ordinance that derived from our accessory dwelling units and I'm not sure that we wouldn't be better off knowing what, where each one is going to land somehow. And, uh, I guess we just have to do the best we can and whatever happens, happens. Um, unless, um, you know, at the pace we've gone at in terms of short-term rentals, maybe all we can do is, is don't point at it. It'll take six months. And in that time, we'll resolve this thing with the ADUs. Are they going to be a thousand square feet? If not, I mean, you all wouldn't know this because you haven't sat in these short-term rental meetings or were, you know, arm wrestled over the language, but it, the size of them is, is basically 650 square feet for a short-term rental unit. That's the same as here and my, I'm jumping ahead. They're so similar. There's so many disadvantages. If you look at ADUs versus short-term rental, I don't see why anybody would take one of the short-term rentals, the way it's shaping up when you could have an ADU. But, um, I, that's just a a, a bit of insight for the people who are either listening to this meeting or s- sitting in on it, uh, on this own participation.
You could build an ADU in your backyard for the purposes of doing short-term rentals.
Oh, for sure.
Without a.
The only, the only real difference between short-term rental is the limitation to 29-day still, you know, maximum contract and 100 days per year rental.
So the, the, um, the state regs, the new act does allow a town to continue to regulate short-term rentals though.
That's correct.
So they are a difference because you have a right to build an ADU. You don't necessarily have the right to short-term lease it.
Right, but you can lease it for 31 days.
Uh, under the, the, the.
As an ADU, yeah.
Well, yeah, ADU, you could rent for, yeah, for a year. Um.
Yeah, exactly.
Is that, are you not restricting rentals less than 30 days? Or that's what you're, that's the maximum.
That's totally the focus, 29 days or less.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
As over 30 days, you can rent as of right.
It, the 29 days has, it's a trigger in the building code. The building code treats the two uses differently. If it's less than 30 days, it's short-term, some, somewhat like basically a hotel versus 30 or more, it would be considered a, a, a residence, uh, subject to the residential standards.
And, and the thousand square feet is, it's, it's, it's strange language. It's a thousand square feet or 30% of the primary residents. So if you have a smaller house, it could be smaller than a thousand.
Right, it's whichever of those measures is, yields the smallest.
Right, yeah, so it could be, it could be less than a thousand, uh, and it could be more than a thousand. Like, no, I guess no, so a thousand would be minimal.
More than a thousand.
Could be more than a thousand.
All right, so a thousand would be the, the maximum.
We used to have a bit, essentially that same thing, didn't we?
Yeah, well, I can remember it was 900 or, or a thousand, but.
I thought it was 1100 or something like that.
1100, it was a thousand or 1100.
Yeah.
Was it?
Um.
And we ratcheted it down and no one came to the public hearings and it said anything about it.
Right. So.
But what is the best way to get community feedback on it? I don't, I'm not sure where we would want to put out a a, um,
But, hey, that's the purpose of a public hearing, I think.
Well, uh, i- if our vote is to engage a public hearing, do we have to have some sort of draft motion? And what would that say?
We would have, we would have to say that we want to opt out to the, of one or both of the provisions of the state statute. That would be the subject of the public hearing and we'd invite people to comment on it. But we could wait for a month. We could wait till after the election. We have time. Um, you know, my feeling is that if, if we were to let the state statute govern, then we're opening ourselves up. govern, then we're opening ourselves up, which is what the intention of the state statute is, is to put in rental, rental units wherever you want. That's the intention of it. I believe. Trying to open up affordable housing and, you know, I, I don't know that, that if you phrase it in that way, that um, the people in the town would really like it.
Right, but the, the selectman did pass some kind of uh, resolution saying they were, you know, trying to support affordable housing and then we have the affordable housing plan by the planning. So I just, planning commission. So I just think we should engage them. Before deciding our path.
Okay.
Public hearing is the legal way to do it, but I'm just trying to figure out if there's an informal way that we can get some of this feedback. Because I know there is support for, you know, the state act.
Right.
And.
You you could send, you, you could have a draft correspondence to send both to the planning commission and to the board of selectmen to ask you feedback to, and just saying you are, you're weighing out the options potentially opting out or um, and like to hear from these, these groups as interested parties on the subject. The board of selectmen also will have to vote, just like you. That's in the, that's in the um, statute, just like the, excuse me, temporary healthcare structures. That's where they got the language from.
And we could ask the planning commission to give us their opinion.
Right.
And it's likely, because you, you wouldn't want to go down one path and then selectmen be, you know, entirely different from.
Right. Mike?
Well, I was just going to say that might be more time efficient, right? I mean, April's going to come up. I, I, uh, I unfortunately will not be around at that point as my seat uh, will be in someone else's, someone else will be in my seat at that point. Uh, but April's going to come up quick on you guys. Um, so you're going to want to be mindful of, of time, uh, and, you know, uh, I, just like everybody else, you know, I, I'd want to know where, you know, the citizens of our town sit with this, right? Um, yes, we all had a chance to speak when it was coming at us from the state, but uh, you know, now it's, now it's here and now it's affecting us and now we have another chance.
So just let me get this. It's, this is a one-time chance.
Right.
If we don't opt out, we're in forever.
Right.
You can't opt out. Okay, yeah.
You can't opt out of will.
Yeah, yeah, you can't change your mind.
No, but you can't go back through this process later, you know?
Right. It depends on how fast we want to move. I mean, do you want to wait? What's the sense of, of the commission on that?
Yeah, well, at the risk of sounding like a heretic, I, I'm interested in, you know, until we have broader feedback, my inclination would be to accept the state description of ADU and go with the flow here, but that's stead with an anticipation of taking steps as we've brainstormed here about getting input um, through some public process. So there's an opportunity to change your mind before, you know, irrevocable vote. So if I'm persuaded that my, I'm, my inclination right now is in not in the best interest of the town, then I want to be able to vote no. You know, that I don't want to adapt the state, you know, at a later time, but tonight I guess I'm, I'm inclined to accept what they've described, but I don't know how anybody else feels. Um, I'm not, I'm not saying I'm a hundred percent positive I'm right, but, you know, if I have a decision right now, it's inclined to go with it, but I understand the concern that you raised, Dave, and I think it's a legitimate one. Although I can't remember the last time an ADU was rejected because of the location it sat on.
No, it was because it was going to be a rental that uh, was the one that we lost up on library lane or not, on pasture lane. We voted no because the guy was going to rent it specifically. And what the state is saying is we're not going to be able to do that anymore. And.
I don't think we can do that right now under our own regulation, but we have tinkered with it since we had the, you know, the, the application, multiple applications from the pasture lane. Uh.
I think pasture lane was the last one we had.
Well, then we, didn't we have another one down in, in the southern part of the town where it was a detached one? I can't remember. What was it?
Nodbrook. That was Nodbrook, 11 Nodbrook, or nine Nodbrook, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and. Did we go for that or did we vote?
That was, no, I didn't think we did.
Yeah.
No, that's, one of the many issues there that makes that one distinctive decision. It was on a seven acre parcel. That property wasn't, you know, about trying to squeeze something in on a hundred fifty by two hundred lot. And he was putting it, it was uh, an existing structure he was going to renovate.
Right.
And he had another story, so the thing was going to be in a space that's not currently there.
No, I think.
The barn he was going to renovate and so, yeah, so the town attorney's opinion was.
Bruce, I think what happened is he was going to tear down the barn. He had a five-car garage.
Yeah.
And he was going to tear it down and build on the same footprint. A new property. And he was going to make the second floor a thousand square feet of in-law apartment for his real in-laws. And the, we turned it down because it was a new building and that was not in accordance with our regulations. It had to be an existing building. That's my recollection of the.
Well, at least the second floor was going to be new space. The existing building didn't have a habitable second floor, so.
Right, but the, the existing building was going to be demolished.
That's, that's a fact.
Build on the footprint.
Yeah, I, I trust your memory, Dave. I think you got it. Yeah.
Anyway, but that.
But with, with the state reg though, you could have a, you know, less than a half an acre site and put another building on and
That's correct.
Have an ADU.
Not a fifteen thousand, or any R1, I mean, R15.
Well, does he, yeah, it could be an R15, it could be even smaller.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and was there something there too that the, our, our setbacks didn't apply to the ADU that you could actually have the?
I think there was something. Mike, was that true? That setbacks didn't.
I thought I saw something in the, in the PowerPoints that, that said that it could be in front of the, it didn't have to be behind. Our regs now require that it be behind the primary house, but I thought they were.
But there, there was an accommodation for a very large, a large lot, uh, Kevin. And the, the house set way back that there were some dimensions where you could fit uh, um, an accessory structure between, you know, in a place that you wouldn't be able to on a smaller lot.
Right.
But I, I, this is just stuff that we need to know more about and then we would need to know, you know, if we were going to opt out, or would we make other changes to our regs? Um, to make them more friendly towards affordable housing. Um, maybe not as friendly as the state regs, but probably because, I mean, you, you do have considerations for neighbors. Uh, like, you know, to, to houses on one lot. I mean, there's a lot of, uh, houses that, you know, you, a developer or a person that was interested in doing this could come in and buy up lots and then put in bunches of, of ADUs if they wanted to do this.
Right, and then almost every application that we had where somebody was going to rent the ADU got neighborhood pushback. And if you were, in fact, when we were discussing these regulations, they kept coming, the thought kept coming up, how do we restrict it to family? And, you know, you, we decided you can't really do that. Um, but in any event, uh, I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of people who think that adding rental units everywhere is, is not in keeping with the character of the town. And the purpose of this state statute is to avoid that, to make it impossible for us to use the character of the town to turn down these things.
Especially having approved something in the order of a thousand apartments in Simsbury in the last, I don't know, six or seven years, maybe eight years.
Anyway.
It's hard to say we're not apartment friendly.
Anyway, I think we ought to decide what to do. And I think going to our planning commission and asking them, since they did a, a, a recent update of the affordable housing plan.
And they gave, they gave us some assignments in, in their affordable housing plan. Um, that we should also take a look at. I, I can't remember them off the top of my head, but um, we have some assignments there that they wanted us to take a look at. Um, can we actually have a, a workshop too as a way of getting dialogue or is it public hearing the only way to go?
You can have a workshop, just the only thing would be is we don't, we, at this point, we'd have to have it on Zoom. And by that, many people attending. So it, it is a possibility.
I, I definitely think we need a public dialogue on this. Um, and, and, you know, and we will get both sides.
Well, the question I'd go back to is do we want to, you know, I think getting a lot of, getting, I don't know, getting a, um, a public discussion or a workshop with the planning commission with, um, 15 people on a screen is not really a easy thing to do. But I think if we ask them, I think first of all, you're right, Kevin, we should look at their, their comments in their affordable housing plan, which I can't remember the details of what they wanted us to consider. And then uh, maybe after we do that, we draft a request to them to give us their take on this idea. And at the same time, go back to the, and then go back to the selectmen once we decide which direction we want to go.
Well, we're, we're feeling around for Dave is the question of whether to present this as we're anticipating a no vote there or, or a yes vote. It's one or the other that our commission is anticipating a yes or a no and we, uh, are identifying a public hearing date or something. But we actually have staffed up some sort of a vote to have a public hearing.
We have to have a vote to get a public hearing, but what I'm, before we do that, the question was, let's ask the planning commission, let's ask the selectmen what their opinion is about this possibility that we could adopt. We, we could vote to opt out and see what they say.
Yeah, for people, anybody who hasn't seen it, in the Dropbox, in the, um, where's all the, the stuff on marijuana, uh, Mike? It's in the Dropbox. It's all in one thing. I forget what the fold, what the name of the folder is.
I put in legislative update.
Legislative updates. This is, this page, if I can figure out how to do this. This is a page from one of those. And it's, it's just about this and it lists in bullet points what the issues are that are in the, uh,
Right.
ADUs, changes. And, um, it's written by an attorney or somebody who was doing a proposal or no, doing a summary for land use people. And it's to broadcast in, in big strokes what the major uh, areas of change are. And this one page is the accessory dwelling units. And so I pulled this one out to have with me tonight, but I've only read it twice and so, I mean, I don't claim to be any sort of an expert on this, but, um, I think that in presentation to the, uh, you know, of the questions to the, uh, the, uh, uh, planning commission, the planning commission, my experience is, has, they have little sort of realization of what the zoning laws, what the zoning regulations actually are. And I'm, I know our, uh, you know, we currently have somebody on the board of selectmen who was one of our colleagues for four years. But that board is, does not have a high IQ as to zoning regulations either. My point being, when we ask for their reaction or their in, input or thoughts or whatever, we need to contrast where the points of change are. What are, what's, how does that contrast with existing Simsbury regs? You know what I mean?
I think you're right.
Yeah, because there'll be a drift for sure. Um, you know, and then we could also ask that responses be confined to these areas of change and not, you know, larger dialoguing about affordable housing or other areas of concern in Simsbury.
That's a good idea. Mike Glidden? Is that something staff can do for us is to put together the comparison of what the statute says and what our regs say about ADUs and the parking?
We could do that and have it to you at the next meeting in two weeks.
Okay, that's good. That'll get us to start.
I, I'm looking at the, um, the affordable housing plan from planning. And our two assignments are investigate developing and implementing inclusionary zoning regs. And two, consider amending the zoning regs to permit two-family housing by special permit in areas that are served by public water and sewer.
Well, what do they mean by special permit is I think what they're really saying is by permit, not by
By right.
Special exception.
Right, but the, the reg was, the state act wasn't in place when they wrote this recommendation.
Right.
Right.
So we would need to get, I think we need to get their feedback on, on. Because they actually were the ones responsible for writing the town's Affordable Housing Act or Plan.
Planning Commission was.
Yeah, the planning commission. So I think we should, you know, have, get some input from them as now that we have a new state reg, uh, how, a state act, how we want to proceed.
But right, but my, my point is just in September 2021, we're, we're looking for their input on this topic. You know, accessory dwelling units and these points of contrast between the state and the existing.
Bruce, let's, let's try to wrap this up because
Okay.
Mike, Mike has agreed, Mike Glidden and Laura have agreed to put the two pieces, what the state says and what our regs say together so that they have them both in front of them. When we ask them for their opinion on on this topic of opting out. Um, and as you said, I don't think either the selectmen or the planning commission understand the details of what our regs say currently. So we need to get that out in front of them with the opt-out question. So let's let staff do that and look at it next time and decide whether we want to go to planning and how we want to phrase it.
Okay.
Otherwise, we'll be here all night without any resolution. Um, let's move on to marijuana and what the provisions are and what we have to decide and when. Mike, uh, can you lead us forward there?
Yeah, I'll, I'll start and sorry, Laura may pick, pick up. Um, so Public Act 21 dash one is the enact concern the reasonable equitable use of cannabis. It's with the recreational marijuana bill. I think some members here have seen a lot of, uh, communities around us have started en- enacting moratoriums in order to, uh, look at, uh, whether they're going to allow or not allow recreational marijuana. Um, right now, there are, there will, or there will be 11 types of licenses that'll be available. Um, and that's including some of the medical licenses. Um, Simsbury would qualify for one recreational uh, retail license and one micro cultivator license, which is different than what, uh, Kirra Leaf is. Kirra Leaf is in a whole different ballgame than the rest of them. And that's one for every 25,000 people. So our population is just under 25,000. So we skated getting a qualifying for a second, uh, um, license. So we have three options on what to do. Um, and we are under a timeframe for this. It's a similar sort of timeframe this, this coming spring. In 2022, we need to make, we need to take an action on whether we're going to allow uh, the retail sales of recreational marijuana in Simsbury or prohibit. Uh, well, the three act, let me go over the three actions first. Prohibit is we say that it's, it's not allowed. Um, and under advice of council, if we were to go down that road of saying it's not allowed, we are going to have to call out all the types of licenses that are, um, the new licenses that are. uh, the new licenses that are mentioned in the act and basically say these are not allowed in Simsbury. The other option is that we can regulate. Um, we can regulate it and by special permit, permit, um, by zoning regs or could by ordinance, by licensing similar to short-term rentals, um, we could develop an ordinance and regulate it. The last is if we do nothing. If we do nothing, um, when this takes, when this law takes an effect next spring, um, by, as of right, these uses are allowed anywhere a similar use is allowed. For example, if retail is allowed as of right to site plan approval, for example, in the center of Simsbury in the town center, a retail, uh, marijuana facility can open up without any, without a, a permitting process through the commission. Um, it would be treated just like, just like retail. That's if we do nothing.
And how would that work, Mike? Mike, if, so the first one in gets it?
Yes, that's how it would work since we only are allowed one license. And I will say this to this, this commission, I have received calls of interested parties looking to open a uh, retail re- recreational marijuana, uh, facility in town. And the answer that our offices has been providing is that we, we do not have regulations in, in place at the time that would allow such a use. And further, the, the commission, this specific, this commission has not met to discuss whether we're going to allow it or, or prohibit it in town. So, um, I had, there's two presentations, uh, the one was by the governor's office, the other was by, uh, a group of attorneys um, regarding this that I uploaded to the packet. I gave you the link to the, to the video presentation. I hope, uh, some members watched it. Laura, do you have anything to add as I take a cough break quick?
Nothing at this time. You covered it pretty well between tops.
What about, what about, um, just plain prohibiting, uh, smoking marijuana in town in public?
So, so the, the community has the ability to do that, uh, by developing ordinance. It would not be a zoning regulation. Um, and it specifically says that, just bear with me.
As far as zoning regulations can establish rules, um, regarding the the hours, the signage, near religious institutions, schools, charitable institutions, hospitals.
How about size, square feet? Any, any size limitation?
Size of this retail facility? Dave, size of what?
Yeah, selling a retail facility. If, if, how do we control the size? And location, we have to have a zoning rig for that. Otherwise it can go anywhere. There's retail. But.
Marijuana is a use. It's not a structure. It's requiring that we recognize their license and let them sell it. We, somehow it's got to be up to the town to regulate.
You can regulate it like you do a liquor store.
Exactly.
Right.
Although, you know, can you have samplings on site, sampling rooms on site?
Those are, yeah, and the other thing too is consumer protection is, is supposed to develop regulations on how this whole program is going to work for the retail establishments. We have yet to see here uh, of any draft, uh, regulations at this point. So I'm sure that some of those will be handled through the, uh, consumer protection permitting process. You know, for example, Kevin, that's a great point. What do you do if it's like, you know, the wine, the, the wine sampling night at the, at the liquor store? We have the, the, uh, the edibles night at the, uh, retail establishment. And then to the chairman's point about, um, you know, limiting the size, you can't, if you're going to, if you're going to allow it, um, I, I would recommend that we put in, you know, put it as a special exception, a public hearing process. And we start looking at what zoning districts make sense where this thing could land.
Um, personally, I would say that, you know, we should proceed down the moratorium route pretty quickly.
The quicker the better.
Yeah, and I would say, you know, that would be something that I'd want for next meeting is just the language for for a, a moratorium or even schedule a public hearing. Or do we need it, you know, we need the wording in order to schedule a public hearing, but maybe you can do magic and do them both. But we should, you know, because public hearings have to be, you know, scheduled out. So we should do that one first. And then that, to me, that one's more important than the other, than the other work we have you guys doing.
What would be the duration of a moratorium and how would that protect us?
So a moratorium, we could start off with a six-month moratorium, could be extended up to eighteen months. Basically, anyone who wants to apply for a retail establishment, micro cultivator or any of the other new licenses in town, should they become available through consumer protection? Um, we would say that unfortunately, uh, your use is not allowed in town yet. We are determining whether we're going to, uh, develop regulations. So, you know, we're going to put a pause on it and we, we actually can say that we will not accept their application. Um, while we're developing regulations or saying, uh, developing, uh, prohibition, um, for the regs.
Okay, alright, so let's, let's.
Let me just add my own, uh, take on this as I've been watching the newspaper and probably you all have through the latter part of the summer. I've seen a half a dozen communities in this area that have taken, you know, announced moratoriums and they're, they're all one-year moratoriums except for most recently, I think Canton announced a six-month moratorium. I think we should just go for a one-year moratorium. That's my feeling. Give ourselves time. We're going to have the holidays here very shortly and, and what are we going to get done in the next several months? So then we're going to be scrambling in the springtime. And it doesn't seem to me that we, we owe it to ourselves to be scrambling around to see if we need to extend the moratorium. Let's just do a year like so many of our colleagues, other towns right around here who have the same issues and the same similar complexity to their populations and concerns. So I'm, I'm in favor of one year and I'm totally in favor of taking that step as quickly as we can. But I reckon.
Do we, we need a public hearing to, uh, adopt a moratorium, Mike?
Yes, we do. And I'm going to pull up the calendar right now. So you meet twice in October. You meet on the fourth and the eighteenth. This is a, would be a commission um, sponsored, uh, because a moratorium is considered a text amendment. Um, we could, if, if the commission were to, uh, take a vote tonight to schedule a public hearing for a moratorium, we can have that public hearing on Monday, October eighteenth. Um, that would be the, the earliest. We can't do it on the fourth, but we can do it on the eighteenth. That gives us enough time to do our advertisements and referrals.
Okay. What do you think, Kevin?
Yeah, I would say that we should proceed with that. Do we need our vote to?
Mike, let's go around and get everybody's.
Yeah, I think we need time to get our head around this.
Anne?
I totally agree. Um, it would be nicer for me if you could do it the following in the first in November, because I will not be at the eighteenth meeting. But I understand that it's important to move quickly and I'm a hundred percent behind on moratorium.
And Diane?
Yep, I would agree. I think it's a, a good idea.
Again, Bruce has already spoken. Okay, so let's, let's go ahead with that. Let's have a motion to schedule a public hearing on a moratorium on, uh, can they, I can't even say it.
Cannabis.
Cannabis, um, uh, establishments in Simsbury. Can I have a motion to do that?
Well, just I, 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 I move um, as Dave described it, I, I, I just wonder if though, is that, is that wording right? Um, because I think there, there might need to be a certainty about this wording that we've got it broad enough that.
Well, we're scared, we're voting to schedule the public hearing. We're not, we haven't voted for the language on the of the moratorium.
When are we going to do that?
Next time.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay, the staff can go ahead and work on it.
Well, we had, we, Bruce moved the motion you made and I don't know that we voted on it.
You need a second? You need a second, okay.
Okay, you can't, you moved, you moved it. You can't second.
I know Diane seconded.
Diane seconded it.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Those abstained. Okay, it carries six, nothing, okay.
Yeah, I don't want us to be dragged into court for, uh, not following Robert's rules, you know, I mean, come on.
No, that's a good point, Mike. Good points. We're going to miss you, uh, later this year, when December comes and you're not sitting in that seat.
But, uh, it is going to be weird, that's for sure.
And we're going to have Diane.
What?
Oh, we'll have Diane.
Oh, oh, oh.
You gotta move up.
Better win Diane.
So we'll have another new face though, yeah. Well, I don't know. That's awful presumptuous for, for me to say that. Maybe I'll be with Mike. No, no, no.
Bruce, I will work on any project with you anytime, anywhere.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, um, and we're going to hear from the, um, the, uh, short-term rental people pretty soon, right, Mike or Bruce?
Uh, it's hard to say. I mean, it, we, it's, it's starting, it's fairly narrow now that we have just a few uh, issues of substance and then we have to go back at some, um, sort of, uh, you know, the wordsmithing a little bit and punctuation and grammar and stuff, but there's a couple of other issues about you know, substance of the way the thing would work, but largely we have the frame, framework pretty well settled and the town attorney's office has taken a pass at it, so you know, we have something that's pretty close. The thing is that we have starts and stops to our attention and our organizers and somehow these time, time between meetings can be really protracted and I don't know why that is, but you know, we're in year two here, I think, or we're approaching. Yeah, I know.
The fire.
It's, I'm, I'm offering an observation, Dave, not a complaint.
Okay, if the fire went out is what happened.
Uh, yeah, exactly. He, there's not as much heat under the kettle anymore and so.
Mike, anything, uh, more on Steph?
Now I have, uh, no, no further updates. Laura, do you have, do you want to give any updates? Do you have anything?
Not at this point.
Okay.
I'm seeing the message about the forty-minute time limit here on my screen.
I'm not seeing anything.
Maybe I'm already gone. I don't know.
No, you're still there.
Okay.
I don't know who's forty-minute limit, but, um, I think we're at the end of the agenda. So if you're a motion to adjourn, we can all.
Okay.
So moved. Mike Doyle, seconded by Anne. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Okay, people. Thank you very much.
Have a good night. Yeah.
Yes.
Good night. Hi, everybody.